Time being six o'clock, I'll call this meeting order. All rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Here. Here. We have forum. Does anybody have a reason to abstain for financial or non-financial conflict interest?
No.
I do not.
I have none. With that, any additions or corrections to the agenda?
A little approval of the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved. That will move to public comment. Anybody in the audience care to make a public comment? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. Move to item five, approval of the October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one minutes.
I would move the approval of the October nineteen, twenty twenty-one minute, meeting minutes.
The motion is there second?
Second.
Motion and a second for approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Not in the packet, I guess. So line item six is citizens of the year. Oh, it is on here. And I believe we need approval for this. I believe it's been presented however, but I'll read it. This is this is for Jake and Sandy Hoffner to become the twenty twenty Yankton citizens of the year.
Make a motion to approve the citizen of the year resolution for Jake and Sandy Hoffner and their outstanding service to the county.
Second.
Motion by Clemmer, second by Fox. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Onto item seven, claims.
One, one I had on page. Page six, data processing for fifty-six thousand seven hundred and nineteen.
Yep.
Tyler Technologies.
Yeah, that's who we use for all our computer programs and that's our yearly maintenance fee.
That's for the software, basically.
Yeah.
Software.
That's for all the voting systems and all that, or is it just the work?
Everything.
Okay.
Yeah, everything, accounts payable, confiscateable payroll.
I figured it was something like that.
There's a little more further questions, I'd entertain a motion.
A little approval of the claims.
Second. Second.
Motion by Don, second by Dan to approve claims. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. October payroll.
Will approval.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Wanda to approve October payroll. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And then the next item is to rescind the motion for the highway transfers. What this is, we transferred dollars to the highway department from ARPA funds month and a half ago roughly. The state auditor met with Cherry and with Patty. I don't know if you were in on that Karen, but the state prefers that we make one lump sum transfer out of ARPA funds at the end of the year. So they want us to put the money back into the ARPA funds from the highway department. I believe.
And then come back at the end of the year and transfer whatever we need.
Yep, rather than every time we spend it, they just want one, one transfer.
Should that be for everything? And then I suppose it'd go to the general fund and then go to, because we're probably not going to have it all go to the highways, some's going to go to other departments.
So each, each department that receives money from ARPA funds will get a, a single transfer a year versus.
Okay, is that how they want it? Do they want the whole dollar amount from the ARPA fund account to the
Oh, to the general.
General fund and then we district.
Right.
Yeah.
That I don't know for sure. I know Patty was in on that.
If we do it wrong, let us know.
Yeah. I was gonna ask and I forgot to though, if we rescind this motion, then if we need to make a new motion to get out of the general fund back. Okay. Okay, so we transferred four hundred thirty-four thousand, six hundred forty-seven dollars on action twenty-one four-ten.
So you're wanting a motion to transfer that back from the highway department to?
Yep, well, yep. So of two motions, actually not to transfer back. The first motion would be to rescind action twenty-one four-ten highway. And then the second motion would be to transfer four hundred thirty-four thousand, six hundred forty-seven dollars from the general fund to the highway fund.
Okay, well, I'll take the easy one. I'll make a motion to rescind action two-one-four-one-zero highway.
Second.
Great, motion by Wanda, second by Dan to rescind motion or action twenty-one four-ten highway. The transfer of the dollars. All those in favor say aye.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Oh, we're gonna ban in the interim.
What the next motion, we're have to take out of the general fund.
Okay. But, but for Don's point, is that four hundred thousand in the general fund, if we rescind that motion, is it still in the ARPA funds? And how's that gonna affect the county budget? I mean, are we gonna have enough money to do other? If we have an emergency come up before, because we never, we never budgeted to take four hundred thousand out of the general fund. And I get what you're saying, Don, and we just need to be, I'm sure we're fine, but.
We carry.
Not banning until the end of the year. If I were a contractor, I'd wanna be paid.
Yeah, we carry about a five million dollar balance.
Is that gonna?
Give or take.
And Karen, from what you're aware, you know, I know it's not an ideal situation, but we'll be able to handle that.
I, I assume so, because Patty been saying.
Okay. Good point, Don.
Well, that's why I was saying I didn't, I was gonna clarify that too.
And looking into next year, if they do the same thing for a whole year, if I was a contractor, I wouldn't be very happy.
That's, that's just it, yeah. And, and I know we gotta listen to what the state says, but isn't that ARPA funding in, on our account? So what does it matter to the state?
I don't know that it.
Okay, maybe that's something where we should maybe talk to some of our representatives in our state association, because I'm sure other counties are dealing with that, because I mean, you bring up a great point, Don, is that's gonna, if, if we're actually gonna do a project, we can't pay people for a year. Is that gonna, how are we gonna do that? So, but I'm, I'm okay with doing this now, but we'll probably need to make some calls on that, so.
Okay, so we do have a who was the rescind motion, Wanda? Yeah, that was to rescind it.
And then we were gonna vote and then we were interrupted.
Okay. But we didn't have them voted yet. So all those in favor of rescinding the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Now, the second motion, as I understand, it needs to be to transfer four hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-seven from the general fund to the highway department. And that's my motion.
Okay. It's motion by Wanda, second by Don to transfer four hundred thirty-four thousand, six hundred forty-seven dollars from the general fund to the highway fund. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Then the next item on the agenda is the secondary road levy correction. Yeah. Yeah, secondary road levy correction was point six four three, no motion needed, just in the minutes that I informed the board, so.
It was.
Duly noted.
Yeah, it's changed. It was point six four three.
Your microphone's not on. The home bureaus probably can't hear you.
I'm just telling Joe.
Yep.
It went from that to that.
So it went from point six four three for secondary road tax levy to a point six four two.
So went, went down.
Everyone. Big tax break for everybody this year.
Taxes decreased. So you don't want a motion on that?
No, it's just for just to have it in the minutes that it was discussed. So the next items, eight, nine, and ten, we're a little ahead of schedule. We have about twenty minutes to. So.
We could maybe skip to number eleven.
We will. You don't wanna sit here?
What?
You don't wanna sit here?
Well, I was thinking that perhaps Mr. Conkling didn't wanna just chill for another fifty minutes.
So we will move on to item eleven.
Although I would have expected him to bring a pet.
If I still had one, I would. He will. The director and I would like to do something to kind of community outreach reach this winter. We would like to do a donation drop off at the planning and zoning office for the Humane Society. Strictly supplies, not monetary. I've got a list of things they typically need at Heartland from Carrie. And we would like to start the Monday after Thanksgiving, the twenty-ninth, and run it till about the twenty-second of December, right before Christmas. In the, in this time of year and Christmas, they get kind of inundated and we just thought it'd be nice to help them, but also good, you know, PR for us and community service for us. We'd like permission to put it on the Facebook for the county commissioners and on the website as a notification. And I'll probably mention it to Carrie and she might say something on the radio, on her weekly things, but we would like your permission to do that.
You're not gonna have a big box of puppies up there.
No, I wouldn't get much work done if I did, but it'd be okay.
Anybody have questions or comments, concerns?
Do you need a motion? Do you want a motion for that?
I don't think we.
I don't have an issue with it.
Well, we can have a motion.
I guess I'd make a motion to authorize the planning office to do a donation drive for the Humane Society.
Second.
And I'm sorry, and, and utilize your Facebook page for promotion.
And website.
Second.
Still second, okay.
Okay, we've got a, a motion and a second to allow a drop off in the planning and zoning and use of Facebook and website to promote. So we're gonna go thanks, roughly Thanksgiving through Christmas. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay. Gary, you wanna take IT?
Sure. So you all seen the draft for RFP for proposals for IT services? I don't know if anyone had any concerns or questions on that. Alls I would need to know if you just wanted to move forward on it. We do seem to have a number of of companies that are interested. I've already got at least six companies that have approached us. So it'd just be a matter of giving me some dates of how long you wanna let them get their proposals ready and, and, and then I believe we're gonna talk to the department heads at the next meeting this week to see if any of them, there would seem to be interest of them wanting to be involved in this process. And maybe we do the initial review and then present it to all of you and, and then go from there, if that makes sense.
When's our current contract up?
I think he said he was actually done already, but he said he could go to the end of the year if we still needed things, so.
Well, my understanding was that there were, that Cherry and Joe were going to meet with the department head so that find out what specifically they needed. And maybe this would be something that we would bring up next meeting. Because we would have a better grasp at that.
Yeah. I guess, yeah, it's, it's up to you with the draft. We can send it out whenever, but the impression I got the other day was that we were just gonna ask them if they wanted to be involved in doing the reviews, but, but if you wanted to move forward on it, but either way works.
I think it's important to involve the department heads in the selection process. Regarding putting this, putting, putting the request for quote out, I guess I don't have an issue. The only thing would be if, if something changes or wants to be added to it after Thursday's meeting, but.
Yeah, and we can certainly wait till after Thursday's meeting to send it out and things, but if you recall back whenever, it was a few months back, we actually got all the feedback from the department heads at that time and I sent a memo to that effect.
Yeah, most of them met with Dustin. I mean, he, he came here.
He met with a number of them too.
I think he showed up two or three times and sat down with, I mean, so a lot of that's already been done and we, we, we gotta get going on this because really Craig could quit at any time and then we have nobody, so.
We could always do an addendum too, if we needed to.
Right, I was gonna say if we, if we wanted to approve this tonight with the motion, we could probably leave it open to with any additions or corrections from the department head meeting.
I, I guess my guidance is as a commissioner, currently we have this building and the sheriff uses a different system. From what I understand, emergency management uses yet a different system. Ambulance uses yet a different system. And the goal is, in my opinion, and what I've spoken with every IT person is we really need all get on the same page, have one organization that does it all. And each department has different needs. The sheriff, when something goes, breaks and goes down, they need somebody there right away to fix it. Camera, all of that stuff. Same with Paul's situation and emergency management. And so we're really, in my opinion, are gonna need an organization that has capability. Even, even Craig Miller has said, we're getting to the size now where we need to, you know, think about a little bit more robust IT, so.
I think it's past discussions with sheriff, though I don't.
Yeah, I think he'll stay separate. Yeah, that was, that was kind of the plan that was laid out.
What about the other departments? Are they gonna?
Mostly the other ones will, will be involved in this, but, but yeah, it's all laid out in the RFP who'd be involved. And they're gonna, and part of the RP also states that they have to meet with each, with each department and see what their specific needs are too, so.
We have that discussion in our office. Do you think that the department heads are gonna have anything that they would want in our so that like they're gonna have a meeting two days from now and they're gonna say, well, we want this, 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 and this in our P. So do you wanna wait till October with your partner?
Well, I don't know if Cherry sent it out to all, but I got a couple of calls from department heads that already reviewed the draft, so. So I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but that's my only concern is if there's specific
requests.
Requests and some of them, some of them fall under the general and it would have to be discussed to whoever would be awarded, but but some, there may be changes.
And at some point, yeah, there ought to be a contract that, that specifies what exactly they'll be doing, so.
So I'm, I'm comfortable either way, just knowing if we do approve this, that it's, it, it could change, but.
We, we should probably just, just wait then.
Okay.
I mean, it'll just push it back a couple more weeks.
Well, two more weeks, I don't think.
Yeah, I, I agree. That shouldn't matter.
I don't think that's gonna kill anybody.
Put it on the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Okay.
So should we put that on for the next meeting?
So we'll move, yep, we'll move item twelve on. Bring it up again at the November, what, sixteenth?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion requests wants at this time on IT services? Not, we will close item twelve. And we will move on to rural transitional applications while you're here, Gary.
Yeah, so I sent you all the, the applicants that requested some kind of zoning change. I don't know if you wanted to go through each individual one or, or if you wanna just talk about the ones you have a concern with and just vote on them. That's why I created a list. If we had, just could move right to a vote. Say yay or nay.
Said it before, just to be clear, we can't take action, but we can.
Yeah, this would just.
Are absolute no way certainly can. There were a couple, I guess in a you have any else say before I go on my, in, in a broad sense.
Do I look like I'm waiting to say something?
I don't know. In a, in a broad sense, there weren't too many that stuck out as like, you know, no way this didn't make sense.
Yeah.
But it, I do want planning and zoning when reviewing these to kind of look at holistically if it all makes sense, because it does seem like we're, there's a lot of potential kind of spot zoning that's gonna pop up if we move forward with some of these.
Yeah, I think, you know, when we initially talked about this, we were talking more specifically about RT zones that might wanna move to R two. And there's about half, half and half of that. And I think those all made sense from the ones that were individuals that were a little tougher was like the individual residential lot on Deer Boulevard that sits by itself with a bunch of lake, lakeside commercial around it. And then probably the, I mean, the one up on eighty-one where it's, it's the one piece got commercial, but the parking lot didn't for some reason. It was never included in the initial legal. So that wouldn't be that big a deal. But most of them were pretty good sized acreages that were looking to go to R two, so. So that would be good.
From what I understand, back this is rural transitional was always destined to become something else. If either commercial, residential, or something else, so. I guess, you know, I get what you're saying on, on the spot zoning, but as, as an RT zone, there's almost nothing you can do with that property as, as RT and it really, it really should go to the use that that serves it.
I agree. And I, I think it's, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, and, and I get what you're saying too, but you know, it's you know, that from talking to those individuals at the time, it was just, we're gonna put in R two rural transitional zoning on this now and then as that property develops or then it'll go to another zoning class. That's what I've been doing, so.
So to, to me, a good example is the, is the Delmar Nelson property.
Yeah.
He wants to put that entire piece into an R two. And it looks like it fits the area, you know, there's some homes there. One that I probably have more concern with, if I can find it.
And the two right off of, just south of three fourteen there, those, that's right next to R two, the two twenty acre pieces there. So most of the ones that were going to R two were, and then one was on three fourteen itself. Those all made sense pretty much.
Lot of them are split. The, yeah, now, so it, it makes sense because half of the property is already zoned.
I've had some questions on the one that wanted to go to Egg, especially with the business that's there also. I've had some, some people that have questioned that one, yeah, the first one.
Has he been made aware what repercussions there might be for going to Egg?
Specifically, no, but.
I, I guess.
He knows of your concern about the liquor license portion, so.
Looking, looking at that property, I mean.
When you say that property, which one are you looking at?
The Heiney property that wants, in the lake area that wants to go from RT to Egg. In my opinion, that doesn't really make sense because there's no, are you able to pull that up on, on the county zoning map?
Well, shouldn't he be lakeside commercial if he's gonna run an event center?
You, you would think, and that, that's the, the other comment we had as rural transitional, which is zoned now. He's, he has no conditional use for permit for the bar and the kitchen and, and the liquor license. He'd need to probably do another zone to even be in compliance with their zoning ordinance to begin with, so.
Do we know if he's talked to the zoning administrator about that?
Have you, have you spoken?
No, he just, yeah.
Yeah, could you go on, on, on the beacon map and because I was looking at that and, and it's miles and miles and miles away from anything else that's zoned egg.
Oh, up top there.
Wilson, his brother have agricultural right next door?
It's rural transition. All, all of the, all of those areas down there are RT, lakeside, commercial or residential.
If you wanna go to zero, the parcel search, I'll give you the number. It's zero nine point zero one six point two hundred point four hundred.
You zoom out and then put on county zoning districts, please. So none of those properties, all the blue ones are rural transitional, light pink R two, dark pink, lakeside commercial, purple is R three. And then I think that brown over there is PUD and yellow is R one. And if we zoom and to the right with no coloring is the city of Yankton extraterritorial jurisdiction. And so to get to the nearest property that zoned egg, you'd have to go west out by section fourteen or north of. Out by section fourteen or north of highway fifty. And I guess we just gotta wonder if that's the appropriate to have one spot of egg zone. In the middle of all that. What, what is your thought on that? Does that make sense?
No, I think that makes sense. We, that one, I know there's been a couple of questions on already, but. So how do you want to move forward? You want to come back and vote next meeting or you want to vote on them now or?
I'm fine.
As far as moving.
Me personally, I'm fine with all of them except that, that one. I just don't think that one makes. Sense in the schema that, you know, the future Yankton County, I. It's, I don't feel it's a good fit.
And we got to remember, alls we're doing is agreeing to allow these to go forward. At no cost to planning committee, it still has to go through all the meeting processes, so.
So has he come to the meeting, the planning committee meeting to?
Not, nobody has yet at this point, because we, we initially wanted to get commission to, uh, uh, look at them. They wanted, you wanted the chance to look at them to see if you were okay with moving forward on them.
On, um. The second one, Keller.
Yeah.
He must not own that. Chunk that's not part of the.
Yeah, he has kind of, well, he has multiple parcels as he seen there and. Yeah, there's one, at least one of them in between that he doesn't own.
Was he going to R two or commercial?
He was going to R two. He, he's looking to do residential lots.
Are we talking about Keller?
Yeah. That's a total of sixteen point eight acres that he has there that he could convert to residential.
And, and really.
Including that long skinny thing?
Yeah, that's just the street actually, but it's still a separate parcel.
This would be one way of preventing having to go through variances. I know we, we've. Uh, approved a number of R two variances, which really. Hindsight, we probably should have rezoned those instead of going through a variance process, but hindsight being what it is.
That one I'd be okay with.
Northwest Energy obviously makes sense for the use.
That, that they had. The next one wanted to go to commercial along.
That's just that parking lot for that.
That's Marquardt.
Next to that one that already got rezoned. Yeah. It should have been included in the original legal. I don't know why it wasn't. That was before my time.
Going to commercial too, it looks like, yeah.
Which would fit its use.
Yes.
And then, like we said, the two, uh, twenty acre pieces south of three fourteen, that makes, that's makes sense. The only other one is the issue is that residential lot we talked about on Deer Boulevard that's be sitting by itself.
Is that, is that Miss Stefan?
Yeah, just south, it's that. This little blue one right there. Starts around R two and lakeside commercial.
Well, it. It's, it, it's being, is it being used as?
Cause it's already residential use.
Yeah, so it's, is that's what it uses, then that's.
Yeah.
You would think that's what.
By itself.
Yeah, well, the hope is if.
But if it's. Is the second part a way to get a variance without getting a variance? Makes it look like the.
Well, it brings it into compliance, which is a big deal, so, yeah.
If that's.
Especially if they go to sell, just makes sense.
How, do you know how big that lot is? It's definitely under twenty acres, right?
One acre.
So if they were gonna do any, you know, minimum lot requirement for R two be twenty acres, so it's, it's no way it'd be R two compliant.
RT.
Our, where we are.
Yeah, it would be R two, two compliant.
I, so I think it does, you know, make sense, hopefully, some of the neighboring properties would eventually. Go that way as well.
And the last one or the. Weisler one, that's three point two acres that you go from RT to R.
And like, that's one that I, to me, it makes sense, that's all, all utilize.
And that's right next to R two.
That, that whole strip should be.
Yeah, I agree. I was actually surprised we didn't have more interest, but.
I think.
They just took a while to, to bring him in.
Much, from what I've heard, people are waiting to see how this first batch goes and then.
How did all those get built there?
Free zoning? Probably.
Well, these are all new, maybe the lots were there, but this is all, those are all new in the last ten years.
Good question.
Mister Heiney. Do you want to say anything on your, so just to hit, just an FYI, we're, we can't, we're not gonna make a decision on anything tonight. We're just kind of reviewing this. And if anything's. Something we don't like at all or don't think it's gonna work. The recommendation's all gonna go to planning its own, so it all has to go through the proper channels, that's a rezone anyway. But did you want to speak at all on your request? There was, there was concern.
That it's going to agricultural and not necessarily lakeside commercial.
Cause there is no egg in that. There's no egg zone properties in that area. Yeah, yeah, take, yep.
Well, here's the deal, um, this is all about making less non-conformities. So currently for rural transitional, we have no non-conformities on our property. Um, we have a CUP for residents, we have a farm. We operate a business there. On, in the same building as our home. Now, we have our lawyer look at this and the only zoning. That we qualify under for everything we intend to do down there is ag outside of rural transitional. Um, that includes a possibly a, a small food manufacturing, that includes a residence, that includes a farm with animals. Um, we can't go to residential, our building's already a non-conformity and our farming. Our farm place would be a non-conformity under lakeside commercial. And so the only zone that we could see in the zoning ordinance that we do, that we can go to. Without creating a non-conformity would be ag.
Just for clarification, you still want to run the operation?
The, the hot farm, yes.
Hot farm and.
We, we are not doing any, we are not doing any venue events. Um, it has created too much of a issue down there, and so we closed our venue. And we are operating solely as a hot farm. But however, under ag, um, any concerns about us running a venue down there would be allowed under ag.
Under ag?
Yeah.
Okay. I was just concerned that you would get to keep doing that and I didn't know if you could do that under ag.
Yeah, yeah, it would be, because we always ran it as events and if under ag, you're allowed to have events on farms. Um, many farms throughout the county have them.
Gary, if it would go to, to ag, how would this be affected by setbacks?
Um, we followed the same setbacks under rural transitional ag. We had, we followed all the rural transitional setbacks, those are the same setbacks you have under ag.
Well, as you know, we changed the, the last, on the last update.
Well, our.
Well, he's not going to be adversely impacted, it's a.
Yeah, our only structure on the place is over a hundred feet back from the property line. The nearest part is property line.
Okay. Any more questions, comments on that?
So just for everybody's clarification, now they're going to the zoning, planning and zoning?
So this will have to. How are you gonna schedule that, Gary?
Well, so basically, yeah, we'll have to notify all this group and, and they'll have the letters out.
Okay. Okay. Is there?
Obviously, you won't make this much.
No. Well, I was gonna say, it doesn't sound like there's any major concerns here.
Well.
I would.
Egg is a bar.
Well.
For the liquor license is a CUP and he doesn't have a CUP.
I have a CUP.
For, for your.
I have a CUP. There's no bar, there is no bar.
You have a liquor license, correct?
I have a, I have a. I have a malt beverage license, we use that under our catering business, there is no bar.
I've been out there before and had.
Yes.
That was maybe when he had a venue.
You, Mr. Vetter has been very much informed by this from our lawyer. Informing him that there is no bar, there is no intention to have any bar, there is no, no more events down there. Much that this may involve our fans, there is no more events down there.
I know we, there would be a lot of, if we rezoned a big area like that out in the middle of ag. To residential, there would be a lot of concerned people and I understand that. But here we have a lot of residents. And to me, rezoning that to ag. Just doesn't make sense for the area. You can do everything you want to do as R two like you are during.
No, we cannot.
So what, what can't you do is?
Our building has eighteen foot sidewalls, we're immediately a non-conformity under R two or R one.
No, I saying you could stay as rural transitional, RT.
Oh, RT, sorry.
Yeah, stay at, stay at the zoning that you're at. So what's, what's the reason that you want to go from RT? What are you gonna be able to do as ag that you can't do at your current?
Well, we are hoping that we would not be harassed if we do decide to have an event down there.
Well, I think in the. To keep things moving, it sounds like. This property aside, there's no concerns or very little concerns with any of the other ones. There may be some discussion to have on this one still, and that'll happen at. At the hearing to. To, uh, change it over anyway. Maybe at the next planning and zoning, just have a brief discussion on these. And get feedback and then go from there with the scheduling, I would think that's some.
We can do that.
Reasonable. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. That should be it.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna close that discussion and move back to item eight. Uh, I cop PUD. I know we're now ten minutes behind, so thank you for being patient.
Emily Reddick with K Construction here to stand for your questions on regards to our. Proposed rezoning, the planning of development in the area along highway fifty-two. You, this is all gonna look familiar to each of you because we came through once before. Um, with the help of Gary and the folks in the planning and zoning. Department, they did suggest that we go through as a planned unit development. We checked all the boxes, we met all of the concerns as we moved forward with this. It's my understanding, Gary, you can, I think we had unanimous approval from the planning commission. And, um, so as you saw with the presentation that I put together previously, and again with this presentation, I think you have all, you all have that. Um, I would, like I said, I'd stand for any questions, if you have any questions or concerns about a proposal.
Is Mr. Icoff coming?
Mr. Icoff is not available tonight, he's out of country. He will be able to be here on the twelfth or the sixteenth, right? He can be here on the sixteenth.
Gary, you have any concerns about this? Uh, I think it makes sense.
If, oh, just second.
Go ahead.
If, I just want to get questions to Mr. Reddick and then if, or is there any more for Mr. Reddick? And then you can sit down if, or do you have any?
No, I read the information that was provided in the packet and it appears to me that. Um, they've had discussions, at least in the. Presentation that they've had pers- uh, communications with Mike Feimer. As well as somebody relative to the. Septic system.
Right.
And that they have indicated that it is adequate.
We have a soil sample, I mean, a percolation test that was included in your packet that shows that the soil is good for that. In talking with Bill Conklin and the folks at the state, we are going to be able to meet the requirements as far as a minimum. Septic size, I think it's twelve to fifteen hundred gallons, and then the, the minimum drain fields for each of those, for each of the pads as well during, in the, the lower section.
But I see that Mr. Becker is here, does he, is here to comment?
Well, okay, well, is there any more questions for Mr. Reddick at this time?
No.
Okay, I'll ask you to.
I thank you, I would just encourage you to approve this. Um, with our plans, as we've got them, we can turn whatever the value of that is now into about eleven million dollars worth of property valuation. In the next six to ten years, I think that's a good thing for the, for the county and the highest and best use for this property.
Thank you. With that, I'll open this up to any public comment, if anybody would care to make public comment.
Which Becker, uh, one one five Lewis Trail, uh, neighbor to the east, northeast of there. And, uh. I'm not opposed to the project as long as it meets the minimum requirements. For septic systems and drain fields and such, and there should be a perk test, and I know on one of the maps that I saw, there's a perk test on. Every location and each one should have to meet the requirements. And, uh, I was told by someone that it might go down to a quarter acre and I was wondering how that works. And it had to do with the septic tank and a holding tank being the same thing. But a holding tank doesn't, to me, holds product for pumping out and the septic tank goes to drain field. I was wondering if there's any clarification on that.
Maybe Mr. Reddick will have to come up here and share with us.
Well, as I said, we've been working with the planning and zoning folks and, and Bill did, Bill Conklin did look into that. As far as whether or not this is compliant with the septic and a drain field, and he said that his understanding with. Was that, and quite honestly, this is the same thing we do on any number of houses we build up in the lake area. Um, and as far as the drain fields, again, working with finer construction, we just have to meet the minimum requirement for the drain field. Which is a hundred and seventy-five feet on a twelve hundred gallon tank. And so we're, we're, we feel very satisfied that we're going to be able to meet the minimum requirements, uh, required by the state. Um, based on that information.
Well, unless I'm wrong, I think what Mr. Becker was saying is, did you do a test on each of the separate? I don't know what they're called, duplexes.
Well, the.
Cause I think the, the houses probably would be fine, but the separate, there looks like to be six. Or eight separate duplexes.
The percolation tests were done, I believe in two thousand six or two thousand eight. And I'm not sure, I think it says on the, uh, the information we provided for you. And I'm not sure, I think it says on the information we provided for you that there were several locations. I don't know what the locations actually were, where they were at, but it's, it's our understanding that the soil in the area and the several locations that it tested was adequate for this type of drain field.
In October of two thousand and five, a letter was sent from American Technical Services, Inc., according to the information provided. It appears to be on page thirty-two of the packet, that test one, test two, and then it said test one, so there's two tests. I guess my question would be, do they need to have one test for each duplex? Or does one test for the whole property, I guess, is my question.
I don't have an answer for that.
Okay.
I just, I don't. I don't have an answer. Like I said, this is done a long time ago, and at that time, apparently, they didn't feel a need to test more than a couple of sites. And they felt adequate that this whole development was on the table at that time. And I guess they, meaning the testing company, and Mr. Ikop, maybe Drake Development, felt adequate that that information was good to be able to cover the proposed development.
I'm sorry?
The state.
From what Bill, from what Bill was told, the state said this project would meet the minimum standards that they're looking for, so that's all we were told.
So they don't need one for each one? They need one for the whole project?
They didn't mention that at all.
I need perk test for the whole project, but they're gonna need the surface area.
As long as the state is happy.
And that looks like that's adequate.
Okay, Mr. Becker again.
I, I talked to the state, the, and the gentleman told me it was a half acre and that there had to be a perk test done for every unit that was gonna be a sale, divided off and sold. So if there's a twin home, there'd be two perk tests needed, one for each drain field, because that would be part of there. And he's not had anybody come and try to have one drain field for two units, unless the same person owned them both.
Unless say, the same person owns both sides of the unit.
Right, and he was, and he never, he never said anything about any units, how to do any units less than a half acre. And each one of these would be a quarter acre. It's just, it's what I'm hearing now, what I heard from him is confusing. It's not running.
Well, it seems inconsistent.
Yes.
Gary? We can. We can certainly verify again before the next meeting, so, so we'll, we'll give him a call and ask that specific question. Well, this is just the first meeting. We're gonna have another meeting on that, so. I don't recall then, when we did those apartments just down the road there. They're not that far away. I don't recall any of that being an issue.
Which apartment?
You know, which one of the big tall ones?
The ones on Deer Boulevard?
No.
No.
Fifty-two. Bluffs, those three, I forget what they're called back there. Condos, yeah, that's what it was.
Oh, Kelly, you meant landing?
No.
The veterinary, the veterinary from Nebraska.
Oh, Mertens, okay.
That's it.
The.
Cause those aren't very far from here.
They're west of there. So do we know how that is? Cause there's what, three levels, four levels? I'm sorry?
Six units in each one.
Per level or per building? Three levels, two, so.
Runs from the building all the way south until you get to the property for.
Okay.
And one of the questions I was gonna have is if, if this were apartments and you held the same number of people, how does the state define that? And I guess, I don't know the exact answer either. At this point, if Gary, if you can try to find an answer, but I think bottom line is they all the septic systems have, are gonna have to meet the state's requirements. Okay, is there any other questions at this time, discussion? We'll look for an answer for that.
I think, I think we owe it to these guys to get a firm answer by the next meeting.
I would agree.
They've been in.
Twice.
Four times.
Twice.
Well, they.
They went to planning and zoning.
Oh, well, I'm not counting planning and zoning.
And then.
Yeah, they were here once before.
So I think from my standpoint, it.
If it, if we can get a letter, something that says. I, I would just feel more comfortable. I have no, no problem with duplexes. As long as the.
Sure.
Cause it meets requirements.
With this being rezoned to a planned unit development, a lot of those setbacks are, aren't applicable compared to an R1 and an R2, because this is so unique. And I know the state does the requirement, well, there, there, when you do a PUD, according to Article thirteen, you know, you don't have to necessarily have.
I don't think we were talking about setbacks. We were talking about drainage.
Yes, yes. What I'm getting though, too, is, is the drainage on something like this, it's a big enough lot, in my opinion, where it, it, they should be able to make it work. And I know we gotta get the final ones from the, the state, but if these were individual one-acre lots, it could be a problem, but be in a big lot like that, they should be able to make it.
Isn't it a five-acre lot or seven-acre lot? Yeah, five. Well. Understand the math. That's why we need something from somebody that says something. That's not in contradiction.
I think for the purpose of our discussion, we're, we're looking at conformance to the area. Number of homes, things of that nature, you know, lot lines, I know, oh, what paragraph is that? You discuss the lot lines and how under the PUD, they are gonna be somewhat different. Now, we can't approve separate setbacks and separate setback distance for drain fields in a PUD. That's still all handled by the state, so we don't really have much jurisdiction on that. So I guess even in my opinion, if the state has a firm answer or not by the next meeting, we could approve it, and if you don't meet it, you still can't build.
Right, and that's what I wanted to add, that if we can't reach the state's requirements, we can't build.
Right.
So at that point, that point's gonna decide, so I would say.
Well, you could build something else.
Right.
Not if we approve the PUD.
You'd have to come back.
Oh.
Well, this is what would be approved, so you'd have to.
Come back again.
Come back again.
Right, and we are working with our friends in Stockwell on the lot lines, if you're asking about that. They've already put together some, some, as I said in the packet there, those are preliminary lot lines. We're working with them to get those things nailed down a little bit better when it comes to drainage and water and roads and things like that.
Thank you. Okay, with that. I think we'll.
Do we need a motion or?
Nope.
Good.
We'll close item eight, and we will schedule the next reading of the change for November. Will this be on November sixteenth, second reading? Okay. Okay. That I take a motion to go into Board of Adjustment.
I would move that we go into Board of Adjustment.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, and you pose. We are now in Board of Adjustment. Item nine, Neil Lang, conditional use permit modification.
I twisted my back this afternoon, and I can hardly walk. So.
We'll make it brief then.
We'll struggle through this, okay? Hello, folks.
Okay, what are we looking to do, Mr. Lang?
We're gonna add. You don't have, you have the information there.
We do, yeah.
Okay, you, you see where on the west side of the of the park here, the west side.
Yep.
Okay, I wanted to, I had approval from, well, everybody and the state last year to do the ones that don't have a star or a plus sign. But I never got that last row done, or the last row and half of that other one. I never got it done last year. But I wanted, what I wanted to do, well, the ones where there's a plus sign, that's what I wanted to add. And that, this whole rest, west row wasn't done last year. Sure, that. The ten sites, none of that got done last year.
Good.
So how many are you adding?
Be ten, eleven, twelve, yeah. It'll be twelve. Pluses there, those plus, you know, these, these ones I never got added last year.
It's a paper copy.
Were you gonna take two of the previous existing ones out?
Yes, I already did, cause there's a road going, you know, to the, the old park straight through there. There was a site there. I abandoned that for, for the road to go through. The big, the big X is, those two are out, yeah.
That's just to provide access from the one park to the other two there.
Right. The pedestal and stuff still there, but it, it's a road now, yeah.
Any more questions for Mr. Lang? I would have you present your next one while you're up, but we have to do them as two separate items, so I'm gonna have to sit down and get up again.
I, I know all about that.
If anybody cared to take, make public comment on the application. Come forward, Mr. Becker.
Yes.
I helped, you know, dirt, this is going back, which Becker, one-one-five Lewis Trail, I helped Neil draw up the plan he had for the first section, which would be the far east one, then when he put this other one on a year ago, he was gonna have camping campground sites all the way down, all, on all of this, all the lines. Then, being seen, needed some parking for trailers and boats and you know, other things that people had for, that were gonna be used in the campground. The bottom, the west, far west, too, where the pluses are now, are some of them are. Those were sectioned off for that, so he had parking area. Since then, he's bought that barn, which is to the west of that, or left of it as you're looking at it. And he has parking, can have parking and storage on that, on that, so he wanted to continue the best use of this property by putting the plus, the ones you're showing as pluses down that first road. But he want, wanted to keep the, a couple of spots there open, which you see in the lower left part of the property. But it was just to make the best use of the property, and he already, and he didn't lose it, lose any storage.
Right.
Parking area with the, with new acquisition.
Thank you. Any more public comment on this? Hearing and seeing none, I'll put, close public comment and bring it back to the board for discussion.
Gary, do you see any issues with this? You think that's?
This is good to go, and Planning, Planning Commission voted seven oh, as you said.
Aside move approval of the conditional use permit.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Don to approve. I'll quickly, we'll go to highlight some of the planning and zoning findings of fact. Modifying an existing CUP at past seven nothing. Ingress egress is present, parking, refuge, utilities, screening, buffering, signs, exterior, etc. are all present and existing. Looks like good use of the property.
You know, I, only comment I'd have is I, I hate to say we're, we're modifying CUP. I mean, it's probably more accurate to say we're just replacing a CUP with another one, cause it in our, in our Board of Adjustments, nowhere in our book does it say we can modify a CUP, but we can issue one, so.
Right.
I would maybe just say it's a conditional use permit that is replacing another one. I don't have any issues with it.
Great. So motion by Dan, second by Don to replace CUP for campground with updates, although, roll call, please.
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Half done, right?
Okay, now we're on to item ten. Another CUP replacement.
This is just a, a building, there used to be a building almost in the same location on about the property, and old, about the same size, actually. I tore it all down several years, years ago, I guess. I wanna put up, put this building up in place of it.
Any questions?
Your storage and things like that, or?
Yeah, my, it's gonna be my own building.
No, no commercial storage, isn't gonna be.
I, I don't think if a camper needs to park a boat or something, it's, you know, it's something like that, but it's, it's not gonna be. I wanna try to keep it from myself, okay, if I did, yeah.
Okay, if there's no further questions, I'll have you take seat.
That was easy.
Yeah. Take public comment.
Yeah, I'll confirm, Butch Becker again, I'll confirm the fact that there, there was a building there, it was an open-faced building, and what he wants to do this time is put some equipment that's setting out and exposed all the time in there. And even with the extension of, of, with seventy-two feet or whatever. Seventy-four feet, it's still gonna be a hundred feet from the east property line. So there'd be plenty of room there, and it's not gonna be intrusive to anyone.
Thank you. Anybody else care to make public comment on this? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the board for a motion.
I'll move approval of the conditional use permit modification for Neil Lang.
Second.
A motion by Don, second by Wanda to approve the CUP addition of the building. Any further discussion?
Are we, are we doing this under like a stout self-storage warehouse? Conditional use, eleven oh seven? Conditional use, eleven oh seven, number sixteen?
Well, I, I took it as a.
Which is fine with me, I think it fits, or are we, are we gonna say, I know before we've done section eleven oh nine and listed uses.
Well, I was taking it as just part of the campground use, I guess, the property use.
Well, the findings of fact, say eleven oh seven.
Eleven oh seven, yeah, you're right, accessory structure per eleven, section eleven oh seven.
Self-storage warehouse, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so mailings were out, um, at past seven to nothing, again, ingress egress, parking, refuge, utility, screen, buffering, signs, uh, etc. are all present. Um, it's incompatible, compatibility with the surrounding property, uh, findings of fact from the planning commission. So with that, I'll take a roll call vote, please Karen.
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Don?
Yes. Motion passes. Yep, thank you, have a good night.
Night move, we go out of board of adjustment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, we are now back into regular session. And we are going to move right down to fourteen, uh, insurance quotes, miss out. Dan, you wanna do more, uh, recess?
Yeah, we, we can, uh, let me make motion.
Please.
I'm gonna make a motion for five-minute break, sorry.
You can, if you.
You can get set up.
We'll give you time. Motion for five-minute break, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, we'll take a five-minute recess. Need a motion to come back into regular session.
So move.
Second.
Good evening, don't you just love to see me?
Yes.
No, I always come with, I try to come with good news, um.
Is there any?
Pardon? Oh, good news, good news, I know, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I apologize, I, I apologize more than I bring good news, the, um, Sherry had asked me, and you, and I, pretty much all of you had asked to present possibly, um, looking at renewing the health insurance for the county employees, January one, there's a lot of confusion for some of the employees, well, for mostly employees, when there's a mid, with the deductibles and changing plans. And so what I'm presenting to you tonight is an option to look at and consider, one, changing the renewal to January one, and there has also been some strong request to look back at Wellmark Blue Cross Blue Shield. So, in my simple, simplistic way of showing, I've done a chart, and I just actually received the renewal for Wellmark, um, it was kind of a time crunch, um, late, late, late Friday night, and early, well, early Monday morning, so, um, this is not as complete as I would like it, but it pretty much, we're always looking at, you know, of course, taking care of the county employees is the number one priority, in my book, number two, we always wanna consider the monetary, um, cost to the budget for the county. Wellmark, and I also included, so, before I jump ahead, and I don't mean to take much time, because I know you guys are running behind. It is, it's high-priced, I mean, Wellmark, going back to Wellmark Blue Cross Blue Shield is a significant increase over the Avera Healthcare, um, Avera, of course, um, came back with very, very, very attractive rates, very attractive rates from our June one renewal, and, um, so, you know, we, whether you choose to continue with Avera or, um, Wellmark, I have requested, um, J- January one renewals from Avera, which anytime you do a renewal, even though we're mid-year, there's gonna be a price increase, so, um, you know, you can expect those even from Avera, so switching from, and, and, let me take a step back. When you're looking at this renewal too, if you look at the blue sheet, blue sheet, the blue, the blue sheet I included is the renewal from June twenty-one from Wellmark Blue Cross Blue Shield. And on the side, I hand-wrote what the plans, comparable plans that they are renewing at right now, with the exception of the new plans are a thousand dollars per plan less in deductible, so, um, when we re, we were looking at renewals with Wellmark Blue Cross Blue Shield, our deductibles and max out-of-pockets were actually more than they are now, so, um, if you consider that, the renewal rates that they're presenting with us for a January one start over last year's renewal, two of the three plans, actually, one plan had less than a one percent increase, and, um, the HSA plan, which is the forty-five-hundred-dollar plan versus a five-thousand-dollar plan, um, actually had five-point-seven-five percent increase. So it, the rates over their proposed plan that we were looking at for our regular renewal of January one are not that much more than for a January, June one are not that much more for a January one start, are you following me? I know this is confusing.
No, the premium's very similar, the deductible went down.
Correct, there you go, got it, okay, so.
Why, why are we doing a January one renewal?
We, it is a.
Out of curiosity.
It is a, it's a, it has brought, um, some confusion with HRA dollars, HSA dollars, um, not only that, when you have a deductible, Wanda, that starts at June first versus a January one, everyone's deductible starts January one, but it's a mid-year, not that it's, it's not a problem.
It's just confusing.
It's very confusing, great, it's just very confusing. I think most of the employees can figure it out, it's fine, but it does cause some problems when you're trying to make some medical treatment plans, does that make sense? Okay, so, um, and my, my greatest concern was the, the, the premium difference would be substantial, but when you compare company to company, it's not, I mean, Blue Cross to Blue Crush, it's not substantial, but when you get right back down to Avera versus Blue Cross, you know, it's a thirteen percent increase over Avera's current plans, so. I mean, when you are considering making a change, you know, these are, these are the things where the rubber hits the road, and, you know, I.
Are we looking at page one or the blue page now?
Okay, we're back to the page one, sorry, back to the chart. Starting with the, um, left-hand side working right, the left-hand Avera co-pay is the, is a plan that obviously a majority of your employees like, that's always been the highest participation plan, the plan that has, when you go to the doctor, you pay twenty-five bucks, okay, forty-four of your employees carry that plan right now. Then the HSA, which is the forty-five-hundred-dollar HSA, has currently thirteen participating employees, and the Avera fifty-five-hundred has thirty-two. Now, what makes the Avera thirty-two, the fifty-five-hundred-dollar plan attractive is that the premium is lower than the Avera forty-five-hundred, and the employees receive forty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents put into their HSA plan. And the county bases their actual premium expenditure off of that Avera forty-five-hundred-dollar plan, so. If you look directly down that Avera forty-five-hundred-dollar plan, it, when you add in the seven-hundred-dollar reimbursement that you're giving every employee, it actually makes their premium per month six-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars and forty-three cents. And the average number of employees on the county plan for the past year has been right around ninety, and you take that times twelve, um, months, it's a seven-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar expenditure to the county, whereas, um, if you look at where we would be at with the, um, proposed plan from Wellmark, be close to eight-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventeen, so bottom line, the Blue Cross Blue Shield is about a twelve-point-seven-five percent increase over what you're spending now.
And it is one of the reasons that people are not liking Avera is because it doesn't cover like birth control? Or fertility treatments, or?
I have not heard that complaint from anyone, um, I think the biggest thing is the network. That is the biggest complaint.
Meaning they can't go to Sanford?
Um, can't go to Sanford or, or other facilities, right, right, so you have a few, you have a few, you have a handful of employees that use facilities in Nebraska, in Iowa, so I think that's a, that's a concern for some people, for some of the employees. So I, you know, I, I try to make everybody happy, and, but it also has to make sense, so, um, to everyone. So my, my conclusion here is if, if Blue Cross Blue Shield is a consideration, I've looked at all the alternatives, which you, they are also in your pla- packet, um, alternative plans. And the, the three plans that I have included, well, actually, there's four, have included, um, are, are very comparable to what you currently have, but the two plans with the stars are comparable to the most popular plans in the county, and, um, those would be the ones that I would lean towards, they're actually, they line up right next to Avera in ex, in, in benefit and, um, drug protection, um.
But they're a hundred thousand dollars more.
Between the two of them.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Ninety-four, ninety-four thousand, I heard ninety-six, actually, not a hundred, but pretty close, what's that?
That first one's is a co-pay plan, and then that second one with the star.
Is an HSA plan, yes.
Hundred HSA.
Yes, sir, yes, yes. Yes, you know, and, and if, if you would have went with a, a Wellmark plan in June, the actual increase over June and today would be right, right around five-point-seven-five, which, which is what I would expect, but, um, you know, like, like I've always said, the one thing about county, the county employees is that they use their insurance, I mean, your insurance is utilized, and there has been, once again, significant claims, um, hence the reason why, um, I know I asked for proposal or, or just a, just a rates from Health Partners, which is a new, um, new company that is coming into South Dakota. I think the city employees of Yankton have Health Partners, well, I know they do right now, actually, and, um, they, they declined even to quote the group, just because of what claims that Yankton County has had over the past three years, so at this time, they're declining to quote it. Which I was really hoping they would, but they declined, so, um, that's the position we're in at this time, any questions?
Yeah, I think you mentioned it, and I don't know how I missed it. So we're comparing to the Avera June twenty-one, but what happens to Avera if we go to, uh?
Okay, I have requested those quotes, and I don't have them yet, it's, it's just, it's, this is such a, they squish, if you know anything like farming, you know how you have like so many months to plant, well, right now is when we do everything, I mean, the government set our schedule to start October one, and we have to December fifteenth to do everything. So it's, it's really tough to get a quote right now, but, um, I am working on it, so it's coming. And the other bad news is with, um, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Avera is a little bit more lenient, but you have to make a decision by December fifteenth for a January one start date. So this is going to be a quick, if, if this is something that you wanna do, I would suggest, you know, if you value your employees' opinions or, or, um, value your employees' feedback, ask them for their feedback. Is it worth the county, you know, spending that extra money to, once again, go back to Blue Cross Blue Shield, is it something they want? I know there are a few that are not happy. Quite a few, so, you know, it is, it, it is, um, something to consider.
Julie, who are you getting this feedback on, uh, county employees, uh, opinions?
Pardon?
Who are you getting this feedback from on the county employee opinions?
I've just, a, a few, I've just had a few personally tell me that, that they're not very happy with their Blue Cross Blue Shield, I, I mean.
A hundred, how many?
Out of a hundred and forty, how many, I think is the question, is it a large number, or is it four?
Number, no. No. I am, you know, I was just asked to put, to ask to present the number, so I am. And I think it's gonna be very interesting to see that, the one, the one thing that I have noticed that, that I do like is we have never had this many families take the coverage, and so family coverage for the county employees, we have four, which out of ninety employees that, that take the insurance, four families is more than I've, since I've been your agent, have ever seen, so families are, you know, it's more, obviously more reasonable for certain families with Avera. Your, your employees are educated, I mean, they, most of them know and understand their insurance, um, they know what it is, so. That's.
Why hesitate making a decision on a change based on?
I, I.
Whether it's four or.
I understand, I think that you need to really speak to your, um, speak to the employees and ask them for feedback, and if you don't not have an overwhelming number of people complaining, then, um, you know, there is a significant savings. number of people complaining, then, you know, there is a significant savings. And once again, I do, I do agree that if you focus in on a network, South Dakota has excellent health, healthcare. We just do. So when you're narrowing the network, you are narrowing the network, but it, it's still, you're still giving them excellent healthcare. It's just if they have a particular doctor that's outside of the network, that's when it gets expensive.
We'll certainly bring this up at the department head meeting and ask them to bring feedback, so.
I think that's a really good idea. Once again, this is, I am not swaying either way. I am bringing you education and information that something you, I, I do think January one would make things out. That is confusing. It, it's not, you know, one, one way or the other, but it is very confusing for, for everybody involved. I think it's, you know, it's hard to manage that deductible when it's, you start with January one, but then you have your plan year is June one, so. So, okay.
Uh, one quick question for clarification, the December fifteenth, is that for us to decide when to switch?
That's for paperwork to be done and signed.
By the employees?
No, 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 no. I would have time, but it would be to decide to lock in your rate and have all the paperwork in.
Okay.
So December fifteenth is the deadline for the agreement.
Our decision will likely be December fourteenth and then.
Yeah, you guys have a tendency to do that, yeah.
That would allow time though for, for the employees to still sign up prior to January.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, and if you have any questions, please feel free to email me or call me or if an individual basis, okay?
Thanks.
So absolutely, absolutely.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will move into item fifteen, uh, discussed proposal for West Yankton Sanitary Sewer Study. Mr. Brown, would you care to step forward?
Thank you, everyone. Guard drops with Stockwell Engineers. John can't make it here tonight. So I just had to go step in this place, I guess, for it. Don, nice to see you again. Been a while since I've stood up here. Maybe that's a good thing, I'm not sure. Um, but we provided, we appreciate the opportunity for providing a proposal for the updating of that West Yankton Sanitary Sewer Feasibility Study that was done, I think, back in the nineties initially. And then Eisenbahn decided to update that, I think, back about two thousand and eight, twelve years ago or so. Uh, kind of sad to think twelve years ago was two thousand and eight already, but time flies, I guess, but that proposal is going to be looking at updating currently now with, uh, what's currently out there, updating the models for whatever development that's happened in the last ten, twelve years or so. Kind of concentrating, I think, on more of that Highway fifty-two corridor area and the Deer Boulevard residential area and Timberland residential area. Um, we'll update all the cost estimates that was provided in that study before. Obviously, costs have changed significantly. Just even in the, within the last couple of years and we'll update graphics and exhibits, obviously with the latest areas and stuff that we have available to do that. And then, uh, take time then also to see what we find out based off of what's in that study currently. Make sure that the options that we have and the phasing that we have, uh, make sense still. And then determine what kind of flows we're seeing and, and meet with the city of Yankton and, uh, and then determine the feasibility of where we can connect to that system and determine costs based on those flows and, and whatever else and, and kind of go from there, so. That's what I think the proposal kind of all entails, all entails. Phase number three, I think, in there is with regards to Napa Junction uh, out to the north there, uh, and potentially seeing what we can do for servicing sanitary sewer up there. And then, uh, force painting that down to, uh, with this future development out to the west along fifty-two. Um, so that's a separate item on there too, if you would like us to look further into that, adding that, I guess, and then to this feasibility study, so. That's kind of what that all entails. From a scheduling standpoint, if we get approval to move forward with that, uh, within the next month, we'll set up a meeting to review with the city and feasibility on where we can connect. And, uh, and then take a look at updating all the things that we, uh, kind of talked about here about in February or so. Uh, provide a draft of that updated study to you. And then a few weeks later, submit a finalized study, um, to you as well. And then in first part of March or so, present that final study to both you and, and the city as well. And then we can talk, you know, who's going to take over potentially the system of moving forward, annexing for the city or staying the way it is and that kind of stuff, so. That's what I understand now. Updating of the feasibility study to be, so if you have any questions, I guess, with that. I could answer that.
So looking at the kind of regions you have identified, what's obviously part of the update is updating with how growth and, and things have happened. I know in the past, there was an attempt to create the sewer district. You know, what do you see being added or, or maybe taken out of a proposal going forward?
Uh, I'm not sure specifically, I guess, we'll look at those sewer districts, um, and evaluate those individually, I guess. And then see what development kind of has been taking place out there and kind of evaluate that's more specific, getting into that, looking in that a little bit closer. I'm not sure, and I know John's probably knows a little bit more about that, what the study is with, with the sewer district itself, but.
This is really just the first step in the process is, you know, identifying area, identifying costs and things like that and scheduling public meetings. I think some people are thinking this is moving forward with this sewer district and it's really just studying and getting updated numbers. Because the first thing everybody's going to want to know is, well, how much does it cost? And we don't, we don't have a study to even begin, uh, to tell them that. So, so I really, in my opinion, this step has to happen before we even do lots of public outreach, because we won't have any information to tell them otherwise.
What was the date of the last study? There was one in two thousand eight and twenty-fourteen.
Yeah, I believe.
There was one after that.
Not that, we have, I got this one from the office.
It was twenty-fourteen or fifteen. Might have been thirteen. It's on my desk at home.
When I got is two thousand eight. Can. Was there, I don't know if that's, I'm sorry, Don. I don't know if the study was updated. I remember in twenty-fourteen on the planning commission, we discussed some of this, but we used this book. I think that might be, there might have been a few more items added into it, but I don't believe the feasibility study was, I could be wrong, but I.
Can, can you kind of assess what would happen if septic systems in the existing area that we're talking about were to break down or need to be replaced?
Well, uh, I mean, if, if currently, right now, if they break down, they'd have to obviously fix those each individual system separately. Obviously, by providing sewer system, gravity sewer system out within this area, we can get everybody on to gravity system and eliminate all of, uh, the potential, uh, septic systems and leach fields that are currently out there. Um, I think that's one of the options. I think there's a number of different options that are in the study that can be done and costs given to each one, so.
I was think, thinking that while discussing this with, with, uh, Mr. Brown, it indicated that there was a possibility that the, the state could deny an, an existing homeowner the right to replace his septic system.
Really?
Maybe I got it wrong.
Well, I think, I think he was talking about, and there was a county where they had a situation and they just shut the state, shut off all development until they.
I could see shutting off new development, but I would think existing, you couldn't deny somebody.
Gary knows about that, but.
There's not really any other option, I think, they would have for sewer if they would. If that was the case, I would think, but let's just go into a holding tank then at that point, as well as just get a bigger tank.
Well, several, several of the projects we dealt last night, the chief concern of everyone, you down the campgrounds and then the, the bigger development was all where the sewer line is going to go, where's the dream field at? So I, looking at our map, my personal opinion is this is really the future of Yankton County, but Yankton as well. I mean, growth going to the north is not realistic. The east with all the flood maps is not realistic, that south isn't realistic. Where, where is Yankton going to grow? The few conversations we had with the city, I mean, they're supportive, but the very first step is knowing what everything costs. And now is really a good time to look at it with the city redoing their wastewater treatment plant in the future. We have to have those numbers to know if it's going to work out, so. Planning for the future of our county.
Has there been any public meetings held, Dan, recently?
No, and part of it is, you know, like I was telling, the first thing people are going to ask, well, how much does it cost? You're not going to be able to give anybody really much information without you know, having the numbers done. I mean, the study for, the one I have from two thousand eight is not accurate.
Going to be accurate at all.
And I, and I think this study from what I've seen.
What was the number in there? Was it ten million?
I don't, it, it depends on what you.
Suppose option, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, because I mean, the original option went all the way out to fifty-two and up. And personally, I, I think that's probably too much help yourself. I think if we have a, a small Highway fifty-two corridor out to Deer Boulevard or something, that's really more realistic than going all the way, all the way up to Highway fifty.
I think that could be phased.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, the initial one.
Yeah. You know, it's one of the development, if you build it, then you get, you know, hopefully more growth and it keeps, keeps going.
And the, the concern I have with this initially, because I'm assuming we want to use ARPFA funds to cover this. And I was told on the calls from the National Association that just updating studies without actually doing the project do not count for the ARPFA fund, which lists sewer and water and things like that. So I do want to caution us on that. Now, there is some, uh, federal legislation going through right now. It hasn't been approved yet, which would give us more flexibility in those numbers. But in the long run, covering the cost of a study is much different than covering the cost of the project. And, and I think we need a lot of support from the people who live in that area before we even start walking down this path. Because without buy-in from the folks who are going to shoulder the cost, it just, to me, looks like the county coming in and saying, we're going to do this, whether you like it or not. Now, whether that's your intent, this commission's intent has no bearing. It's how it's perceived. And so sometimes in my mind, when you go out and have those public meetings before you even start doing studies and you inform them, this is what we would like to do. The first step is to let you know, get your input, and then we would do a cost study and we would look at funding options. And in the end, this is what it would cost each house or business who lives in the district where it would be funded. Um, and I know there's lots of funding options through District Three with all of the federal dollars that have been allocated for projects like this. But I hate to get the cart in front of the horse in what could be a really good, successful team effort. But most of the team isn't in this room today. The team sits out there and, and I think that's just such a key component before we consider approving this.
Well, my recollection is the last time that a sanitary sewer district was, went to vote by the people in that area. It went down to a flaming loss.
And, and to that point, the, the P R side of this and, and really making the case for it is so critical. Well, if you want to be successful in the end.
Exactly, and, and which one of us wants yet another bill? I know it'll start out, oh, it's only X number of dollars or Y number of dollars, but having seen the rapid increase of wastewater treatment and sewage in, within the city of Yankton, which was only going to be five dollars and ninety-five cents a month, is now up to fifteen ninety-five a month and a minimum sewer charge. Whether you use it or not, um, I've had people complaining about that, so. I don't think that the people who have sewer systems or septic tanks are having a big problem out there. That's just my opinion.
I think you, I think you might be right on, on some of that, Wanda. I do see the benefit in if this all were completed. And I know there's going to be people that probably would, if it passed, go gradually. I think a a portion of, of people that need to be focused on are, are people who don't live there, who are developers and landowners and what their future looks like, and if they're willing to coshare some of this too. But I kind of, I agree with the thought process that Sherry has, is I, we've got some areas identified. I think we need to hold some, you know, public meetings and try to get at least a temperature of the water on if it's, if it's even, if people are even open to the discussion. I mean, if people are, without even hearing a cost, saying no way, no how. Well, then I don't know what, you know, where to go from there, but I, I think there's, aside from just some public hearings, there's some pretty almost free and cost-effective ways of, of sending surveys out. Done?
My guesstimate is that if, if you take a survey and say it's going to cost you a hundred and fifty dollars a month, get a sanitary sewer system in there, it'll be about ninety-five percent against and five percent for. But I think the bigger issue is what are we doing to that soil, uh, down there in that lower ground area? And what potential economic gain can we have by attracting some hotels or a motel or whatever out there? And I don't think any of those will look at it. Or would we consider it without a sanitary sewer system in there? But again, uh, if it goes to a vote, I think it would be that eighty-five percent. Uh, we come in with a plan and we get together with the state and we come up with all the possible resources we can get. And it isn't a hundred and fifty dollars a month. It's fifty dollars a month. I think the number changed dramatically on who's going to vote for or against.
I really, you know, to your point, Don, I, I see this study as just us educating ourselves on the numbers. And I've said it earlier, is people are going to come in and they're going to want to know the cost and we're going to have no idea. In, when Don and I were on the planning commission together in two thousand fourteen, we, we did have some meetings on this. And the, the interest in it was overwhelmingly positive. And for whatever reason, the county worked on other projects, but, uh, those. And for whatever reason, the county worked on other projects, but uh, those public meetings we had. At least at that time, um, we're very supportive of this. And we've gotten significant development in that area since twenty fourteen. Uh, so I guess I, my thought is this is the first step toward doing that is educating ourselves, bringing numbers for. Having public comment on it, and if there's no support, then it's, it's not gonna move forward. Uh, Gary, um, you submitted a, uh. Um, application to James River Water for uh, fifty percent cost share on this, um. And it's possible, we'll get that, which will bring our cost down a lot, but. I guess I. I don't see how we educate the public when we, we don't have the numbers to, to do that. It's, to me, it's similar how we did Stone Church. Uh, bridge grant to raise that road, you gotta do a grant and they gotta do a study. Before you know the consequences of raising that road, it's pretty similar to this, so.
Well, the thing that's. Frustrating for me is that. It's, it's been looked at, and I know people, so opinions change and growth changes and things of that, but. You know, nobody's sitting here. Had much to do with it probably, well. We can't just spend thirty thousand dollars every six years. To update studies if there's, if it's never gonna go anywhere. And it, it, to me, it seems like we're at a point where we've got enough information, we've got. Two thousand eight costs. And I don't know if there's a lot of harm in, in proposing. Or at least trying to. Test the temperature of the water. And say, hey, the, the most recent costs we have are two thousand eight, this is what it was then. Um, but. You know, here's some impacts, here's negative impacts, not doing it, positive impacts to doing it. Um, but. If there's, you know, if there's no support, it's. It's tough to spend the money.
Would you guys propose like sending out letters like we did to the RT to Timberland Park and that and say, we're gonna have a. Period at a time at the next couple of commission meetings? If you have any interest show, show up, I mean, is that kinda what you're looking?
I would have a, a separate, uh.
Yeah.
A public meeting, a couple of them Saturdays, whatever, for public input on districts and. And paying these people and landowners and, and uh, developers and. Things of that nature.
Well, that would make more sense to me than just, let's update a study that we don't know that anybody wants.
We could provide exhibits for that, boards, everybody can take a look at some of the options there.
There's a lot of people that, that wanted, I think, one that's, they don't wanna pay for it.
Well, and the other question I have, Don, is.
Uh, uh, just a second please. Uh, I attended Yankton Thrive's. Strategic planning session last week on Thursday and Friday. Uh. And, you know, one of the greatest initiatives is. How they're gonna uh, handle. Housing plots. For builders to build on. Going into the future for all kinds of buildings. Or all kinds of homes, the starter homes, the intermediate homes and, and, and the nice homes area. And uh. A. Plan, uh, such as this would. Would assist uh, their efforts in getting developers interested in. Developing lots.
When, with the comment I was just gonna make is they're asking you if you've talked to Thrive about. I would think that they would be capable, more than capable and, and hopefully willing. Um, to pursue the economic growth and development and start some helpless surveys or something to.
I think they'd be.
To spearhead some of this.
Very willing to do that.
And then, you know, if, if. If with their help, we can, can get public input, and if it looks like it's a go, then we can. We can start applying for the grants and get a study done and, and really get moving forward on it, but.
We have to do it, because that, that federal money's gonna disappear.
And that, that's one of the things that we're in a unique opportunity now, is there is so much federal. Dollars available to do something like that, that's never happened. Before, I mean, this, this could be once in a life. Opportunity, and nobody can deny the value. Uh, sewer system in the lake area would be to the county, I mean. It's just how much is it gonna cost? It being in place would be a huge uh, boost to growth and development and housing, it's a positive for our community. And like Don said, is uh. You know, this, these federal dollars are here and we need to get something. Figured out. Whether we're gonna pursue it or not, I know at the eight county meeting, I mean, Sioux, Sioux Falls is doing it, talking with Dean Karsk. And. I think now is the time, if, if it's, if it's ever gonna make it, now is the time. So I'm, I'm fully supportive of all the public meetings and input, we need that, yes. I just, you know, what are we gonna tell them with that? Study that's. And that study may not even cover all the areas that. You know, we wanna do, it's, it's pretty in-depth, I know that.
Gary, they had, uh, they had one of these uh, sewer districts northwest of Aberdeen, right? The Richmond Lake area?
Lake Minus though.
Correct, yeah, Richmond Lake, uh, they were forced into it, and that's the only comment I've probably heard is that, you know. What about the future, what's gonna happen in twenty years, are they gonna be forced into it anyway, that's what happened at Richmond Lake. Is that they were required to do it and, and we know that the costs obviously never. Never go down, it's gonna be five times the price that it is now, and so that's the only real concern that I've heard, um. Like Dan said, he made a request that I submit the. Request to James River also, and, and so that's on schedule for their next meeting, we can certainly take that off anytime, but. But um, I looked at the book, my book Saul said two thousand eight too, but it seems like I've seen. Meetings or something that in two thousand fifteen, I think there was a group that got together and talked about the. The cost of what it might be, and so, but uh, all the books said two thousand eight was the last update.
I. I mean, I think between. Our office here in Thrive, it's pretty easy to pull up, I'm not trying to take away from. From any work there, but I think it's, it's. Easy to pull up and see where growth has been. And, and draw our own kinda, okay, well, this would look good, and yeah, I mean, we might not have the terrain perfect. But this would be a potential district, this would be one, um, we can kinda go off of what was in oh eight, get our. Feedback based off of that. And then if it looks like it's worth pursuing, um. You know, then hand over the reins and, and maybe the districts that we, you know, kinda come up with aren't even close, but. We at least use those to get some feedback. You know, look at the lakeside commercial versus some R one areas versus R two areas.
Right. To be a little argue, argumentative here, uh, I see in our claims. Uh, this past month, we spent seventeen thousand dollars on juvenile detention. For one month. If, if James River is willing to pay. Half of this, we're talking about the expense to the county at fifteen thousand. Now, I know we can't get away from paying. Juvenile detention, it'll, we have to do that. But if you think about the amount of good that it could do to the community if it were. Financially feasible and that people would support it. It's not a very big investment. For the county.
If everything was good with that, I mean, then everybody was on board with it, getting grants like you, like you said, Dan, I mean. That would require an updated feasibility study, go get those grants too, but you won't be going after those grants until everybody was on board, you're removed.
Yeah.
Doing any type of construction on it, so.
Any more comments or discussion on this at that time?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fully supportive of, of. Public meetings and input and, and all of that, um. Definitely, but uh. I really think, and, and that's actually included in, in the proposal is, is meetings with the city, because.
Yep.
The conversations we have, have had with the city is, um. They would be supportive of a potential agreement where. It would be pumped into the city, you know, but again, that's gonna be cost, and that's where we're gonna identify it. In, in the study, that's what it comes down to is cost, so. You know, I hope, we gotta start somewhere, you know, so.
Joe.
Yep, come forward, which. Come on forward.
Which Becker again, one one five Lewis Trail, uh, you might be further along than you thought, because Timberland Park had trouble a long time ago. And they had put in a sewer system and they pump into Yankton right now. And it had to do with the HUD requirement for the houses, because they couldn't sell any of the houses in that area. And there may, and because of the soils and the percolation and everything else. And it was getting into their water supply, because some people had wells out there. So they ended up having to put in a sanitary sewer system and lift station to get it to Yankton. So.
And it was a problem.
Yeah.
Because my secretary at the time was the president of the homeowners association and dealt with. The lift station and the problem and the sewer system.
Didn't they require everybody?
And the fees.
Yeah.
And I think I've heard. That they are not. Have not totally resolved their problem with what they built.
No, I don't, I don't think they have either, but it's something that's happened, that's. Probably gonna happen every place, every place up and down the lake, because the Corps was out. Some years ago with this, when Mrs. Gunderson was on the board chair, was she was on the county commission. And the Corps ran groups of people around engineers and studies and went and looked up, up and down the different creeks and. Had samples taken. Like out where the, what was the name of that villager? Cause that was, that whole foundation of the old villager would just be used as cesspool. For all those cabins and everything up above. So they, they already know there's a problem or potential problem.
The Corps might be. Key in helping get this, get the movement.
Thank you. Well, I think for tonight's discussion, if. There's a couple of channels that look like we need to do or explore, once. Contact Thrive, um, Gary, you've already submitted an application to James River.
He, he's contacted Thrive too, and they're, they're in support, uh. I think they're waiting to see, I mean, the ball is really in our court, uh. From, in talking to Nancy is. You know, we, we're gonna be the ones who's gonna have to at least start moving this forward and. Um, they're on, they're on board to help. And the city's willing to meet with us too.
Well, I do think we're gonna need some public input, and I, I. My gut says that the majority of the homes out there are gonna say, no way. We want this, because all they're gonna see is dollar signs, whether it's ten dollars a month or a hundred and fifty dollars a month. But there's a. Lot of potential out there too. And that's what I'd like to. Their feedback might be different. But.
It might make the farmers really happy. Well. Cause they've been.
They already.
They're playing about all the hog maneuver.
They already.
Also complaining about the people over there.
Yeah.
So do we need to vote or what?
No, I don't think at this point we.
I don't think it's gonna pass right now, so.
Yeah, I think we gather some more information and we can circle back.
Would, are you, are you guys willing to help us, uh, and be involved in some public meetings without? Any guarantee you're gonna get paid?
Certainly, yeah, well, of course, yeah.
Okay.
Not a problem.
And I guess we'll be in touch with John and. How do you wanna do these public meetings, you wanna have special meetings, you and I have a couple of people do it, do we wanna add them on to? You know, come earlier for a commission meeting, how, how do we wanna do that?
Be their time into some earlier planning and zoning, a few Saturdays maybe.
No, fir- first, I think we need to identify who, who's the point person on this and who's going to lead the charge. And Dan, are you willing to do that?
Yeah, I can, I can uh, work with these guys and, and just get some feedback from the public, that's, that's no, no issue. You guys okay if I uh, set up a. Public meeting?
Absolutely, yes.
In, we can use this room probably. And just get some input.
If you.
If you got. If, there's roughly what, four or five thousand people out in the lake area. That's.
You can use.
Involved.
You'll be able to use like the game fishing park, the parks headquarters and things like that.
Yeah, but it's a more centralized location, it usually helps.
Archery center works. But.
Okay. Did you wanna add anything?
Uh, yeah, I'm Eric, Eric, I'm also with Stockwell Engineers, uh, I think where the commission is standing on. Uh, obviously, there's concern with price, um, I think, uh, one thing. That we've talked about is, you know, just the, you know, current residential customers. Um, I think something that would be good for the commission to also include with uh, this kind of public outreach deal. Would be to see uh, where the county wants to pursue, you know, that kinda lake area corridor. Um, use, you know, obviously the further development of the residential, uh, as well as the. Lakeside commercial, I know Don mentioned the possibility of, you know, hotels can't currently build and. Uh, different uh, high, you know, waste um. Sites or, or developments are hindered by the current, you know, simple septic system.
That's all I have. Thank you. Great. We will close item fifteen.
I move, we go into executive session to discuss litigation.
Yeah, well, we're gonna, we'll take the public comment quick and then we'll. Just to get that off and then we'll take it. Anybody care to make public comment?
Nobody left.
Hearing and seeing none, public comments closed. I'd now entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I renew my motion to go into executive session.
Move that to the end.
Okay.
Yep, motion by Wanda, second by Dan to go into executive session for litigation. Pursuing South Dakota law one twenty-five dash two, sub paragraph three and poor relief. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Do you want me to say that every time, the whole long thing?
Any opposed? We're now in executive session.
Oh, she wants this.
Somebody's in trouble. And it's not me for a change.
I'm pretty confident.
Everybody ready, microphones on. I get a motion to come out of executive session.
I move, we come out of the executive session.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, we are now out of executive session and in the regular session.
So I make a motion to pen the files of CW twenty-one dash eighty-two through CW twenty-one dash ninety, based on the following. Based on the following South Dakota laws. SDCL twenty-eight thirteen thirty-four dot two, SDCL twenty-eight thirteen thirty-three dash two. SDCL twenty-eight thirteen three, SDCL twenty-eight thirteen thirty-three.
The motion to pen files as stated, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor say aye. Shared it, yep. Any opposed? Motion passes. We are.
No, no action on litigation.
No action's been taken on litigation. Okay, we are gonna quickly circle back to commissioner updates. Before we go to items for next meeting.
So there is a farm forum on Saturday. How many are going?
There's a what?
A farm forum.
Families feeding families or something?
Feeding families.
I might go.
I'm gonna go.
Dan.
Possibly.
Possibly. Okay, I will not. I'll be at the SDSU NDSU football game, so we have tickets. So we should probably advertise there could be a possible county forum. It's families feeding families.
On November sixth.
Yep, Saturday at five o'clock.
Is that the NFAA?
Yes. Yep, so earlier I kind of hinted, I have been sitting on the national calls, the Senate, the US Senate has passed. A lot of flexibility on the armpits. The first ten million or so could be essentially spent as we did the CARES Act. And there's another section with ten million on approved transportation plans, so. It is sitting in the House of Representatives right now. I suspect it will be passed. So that gives us huge flexibility because we are under the ten million limit. As are most counties in South Dakota, so all of those little counties who felt they couldn't spend any of the dollars. Probably will get to spend every penny, which is good for us. Hit something else. Oh, we've got Thursday. We've got the department leader meeting on Thursday. We are going to talk about the IT. I have been in contact with alternative HR about bringing some training. And so we'll talk about that on Thursday as well, specifically to start out with. Training for how to give better reviews of your employees, which was requested at the last meeting, so. I did ask them for other training that might be beneficial and hopefully I'll have that before Thursday.
We'll also look at insurance.
Yes.
At the meeting. Yes.
Intended, as I mentioned once before, I guess. Your busy planning for Yankton Thrive Thursday and Friday. Jen attended Lewis and Clark Behavioral Health. Board meeting. Wednesday. And they're still working. To try to get. The their project building project going forward. As you might expect it. Projected costs are significantly more than. What had been thought.
Double.
But we need it.
Wanted any update?
No, thank you, not this time.
Rachel Kipli isn't not our president of our association anymore. She stepped down. Dean Carsk in Sioux Falls is, from what I understand, taking over. It was. She's accepted a a job with the fair, Brown County Fair, so she felt that was a conflict. Great, great president. She's gonna go on and do great things, but Dean is now not, so.
Add one more thing to add.
Yep.
Gary checked with District Three and. We're supposed to get our. Draft copy of the conferency plan. The with the information they've been putting together by Thanksgiving.
You send that out. Send it out when you get it, email it out, please.
Gary and I are both gonna try and get it down to a ten page. Something somebody might read.
Everybody, I've just got one, I had another one, I can't think of it, but vaccines for children five to eleven, twelve, ten? Eleven. Are approved. There's some clinics being scheduled, so if anybody's interested at home or with children. Those shots will be available. And that's it. Items for next meeting. We've got. Well, we're gonna have the ICAF PUD. Which one did we move? IT services. Will be on the next one. We didn't take action on that, we're gonna get input Thursday first. Anything else get moved to?
Are you guys gonna?
Not yet. With the insurance. It is the Ford, I just threw the fourteen out, I. So we have to have our insurance. Our insurance, we have to make a decision if we're gonna go to January first by December fifteen.
So we have to make a decision by December fifteen?
Yes.
Did she have all the courts tonight and everything?
No, we're missing the Veras. She's got a Veras last year, you've got this. So.
Do they need to be on the next November meeting?
Probably should.
Yeah. We can probably talk about that Thursday.
Okay. With that. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion is now adjourned or meeting is now adjourned.